Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 1st, 2012, Kirtuk County Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll start off the meeting tonight with invocation pledge allegiance led by Reverend David Anderson, Truth Alive Church.
Lord, we just thank you, Lord. And we thank you for this wonderful county we get to live in. We thank you for this time of year and this great weather. We thank you for these men and women who have chosen to serve this county, Lord. And we just pray that all decisions that they make will be led by your truth and your love. And we give this night over to you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. We have a couple of changes on the agenda. The printed version had a closed session, which we do not have tonight. Or I'd say the web version is the one that we all have on our computers. The printed one that you have may not, but we're going to remove that. And then there's board appointments under New Business C for Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District, which we're removing. And are there any other changes or amendments?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First item on the agenda tonight's, public hearings. Public hearing in action on PB 12-16 Farms in Timberland Incorporated. Request for a conditional zoning from Agricultural to conditional district single-family mainland of 55.82 acres in Moyoc on the south side of Baxter Lane. Tax map nine, parcels 25C, 25D, 25E, 25F, and 25G, Moyoc Township.
Hey, John, you left off public comment.
I left off public comment, okay. I'm sorry, I jumped right over public comment.
No one signed up.
Nobody signed up. That's why I left it off. Okay, go ahead. Now, conditional zoning is the same as a special use permit in this case? Is that why we're swearing anybody in?
No.
It's a legislative act.
All right. Thank you for being willing to step up, though. Mr. Woody, if you'll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a conditional zoning, so it does not require sworn testimony. This is a conditional zoning request for a parcel of land on the south side of Baxter Lane, just north of the Single Landing subdivision. The property is currently zoned agricultural. And you can see on the zoning map, it has ag zoning to the north, east and west. And then to the south, you can see limited manufacturing or an industrial zoning district. And the R zoning you see on the map is the Single Landing subdivision, which is zone residential. And this request is for residential. It's under the new ordinance, so the actual acronym is Single Family Mainland, but it's basically the residential zoning district they're asking for. Land Use Plan classifies this area as rural within the Moyoc subarea. Generally, the policy emphasis of our plan provides that the Moyoc subarea needs to be an area that we properly manage urban-type growth. And as you are aware of, this tends to be one of our high-growth areas in the county where we face a lot of challenges with growth. Plan also says that density should generally remain low in the Moyoc area, except in areas where additional county services are available and the character of the surrounding area supports higher densities. You can see a copy of the site plan on the screen. And basically what you're looking at tonight, through the conditional zoning process, is the approval of this site plan as a zoning district. So remember, conditional zoning is different than a standard rezoning, because with conditional zoning, you actually know what you're approving. You're approving a type of development. In this case, you're approving the subdivision plan you see on the screen, which includes some conditions, which I'll read through those real quickly. It's limited to a 36-lot, single-family subdivision, having a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, so just under an acre. The structure should be site-built, single-family homes. And also that the property be served by a 6-inch water line. And that water line will serve the property either down Baxter Lane or possibly through the county property from the Single Landing subdivision. And the significance of that is currently on Baxter Lane, there's a 4-inch water line, so they do need to upgrade the water line to support this type of development or this subdivision. And they've agreed to do that. Another component of the conditional zoning is that you're, the applicants are required to have or hold a community meeting. And they have held a community meeting. They did that on July 25th at the Moyoc Library. And I'll let the applicant go into that meeting in more detail. But generally, the neighborhood concerns expressed at that meeting included maintenance responsibilities of interconnected roads, stormwater impacts, and potential reduced water pressure. And again, the applicant should be prepared to address those issues if the board would like them to. Staff has also reviewed this conditional zoning request at our TRC meeting, and we are recommending approval of the request. I do want to go through a couple of the reasons how we came to that as staff. One is that the property, as you remember on the Land Use Plan map, is located adjacent to full-service classification. They are proposing to provide street connections to the south and to the east on the property to provide better connectivity as this area continues to grow. They're proposing to serve the subdivision with a 6-inch water line. One thing that, one reason I think that this property, and it's wooded currently, one reason this property may have been designated rural is on our initial mapping, it showed the property having or containing wetlands, significant amounts of wetlands. But they've actually went out and did a wetland delineation. It actually has no wetlands, no jurisdictional wetlands present on the property. So there's no wetlands that exist here. And additionally, the density, even though they're rezoning the property, the density still remains at .64 units per acre. So it's still a pretty low-density subdivision, all in all. Again, staff recommends support. Planning Board heard this case at their last month's meeting, at their September meeting, and they also recommended approval of the conditional zoning. They did that with a unanimous vote. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I have two, really. First, connectivity. You indicated in the comments that the residents of Single Landing dislike interconnectivity. And of course, that's probably pretty typical of subdivisions generally. They don't want traffic from that subdivision coming through our subdivision. But the simple fact of the matter, there's some expedient reasons for having interconnectivity. And are we going to kind of stand by that policy? Are we going to continually set it aside based on, you know, the concern of the residents that might be affected by it?
Staff will continue to recommend connectivity, because it provides faster and safer emergency medical access. It gives you multiple ways out of your subdivision in the event of an emergency or dangerous situation. And connectivity also allows people to move around local streets without having to be burdened with the traffic that's often carried on our main highway. So this plan, as you can see, it provides a stub to the track of land, to a large track of land to the east, which is an important connection. But then the track of the land to the south is Single Landing open space, which is actually owned by the county. So we do, the developer has proposed a stub to the piece of open space owned by the county. But of course, what's key to that connectivity is somebody's got to build the connecting road through the county property to connect the subdivision to Single Landing directly.
Then water probably comes along the same concern, the fact that we continuously have to address small water lines that were run because of the cost factor earlier on. And I noted that there's a study that'll be done in order to figure out what the best solution of this is. But here again, the looped 6-inch mains look like they should be a minimum for new developments like this, because you get this built out, Single Landing built out, you know, fire protection's going to be a significant factor. And you've got one source coming in there. And same way as the road, you can compromise a single source very easily.
Yeah, and the water line, it does need to be a 6-inch line. And one option is running it down Baxter Lane, which that doesn't provide a loop. The other option is to run a 6-inch line from Single Landing through the county property, which would require the county to give permission for that line extension. And in that manner, you can loop to the Baxter Lane water line, and you can also serve this subdivision with a 6-inch line.
What is the intended purpose of the county property?
It's dedicated as an open space. And initially, in the approval of the Single Landing subdivision, it was for a park.
So we're not planning to put something in there that a water line would compromise that we know of, at least at this point?
Not that I know of. But of course, that's hard to answer without a conceptual or some sort of plan for the property. But I'm sure if we ran the water line through the county's property, we would probably keep it as close to the property line as possible to avoid any kind of future conflicts.
Okay, well, I know there's cost involved with both of those things, so I'll let the applicant address that too. But those were my primary concerns.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Is it possible that the county would have a use for that 6-inch water line if they went through there at some point in time?
It's possible. I mean, if the county had any kind of recreation amenities that required water service, we would need to extend the water line.
But if we ever had a park and wanted to do a restroom there, whatever?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, any consideration given the short distance, that is, from the 168 to sewer lines going into these new developments?
We asked the developer if he was interested in sewer service, and their preference was to do on-site systems and keep it as a low-density subdivision. So they did not express a desire to have that type of connection for their subdivision.
He must have seen the fee schedule already.
I think they feel like one-acre lots is really the market they want to capture with this particular project.
Any other questions?
I have one comment. As the county starts looking at interconnecting these different subdivisions or whatever, I think we need to place some emphasis on those roads making them pedestrian-friendly. Making them the shoulders wide enough where you could put a pedestrian path, bicycle path. People want to be active now. And it's not like it used to be. You could walk down the road and not see a car for several minutes. Now, it's car after car after car. And as we develop out these areas in Moyoc, Lower Kirtuk, or whatever, I think as we do these interconnection roads, they need to be pedestrian-friendly. And if that means we've got to look at how our ordinance is written or whatever, we need to really start thinking along those lines. People are a lot more active now than they used to work to get their activity. Now, the work you do now doesn't give you enough activity, so they want to come home and walk and exercise. And I think we certainly need to make that a part of how we're looking at these subdivisions connecting going forward.
Mr. Chairman, along with Commissioner O'Neill, I talked to a family in Moyoc the other day, and that's the very question they ask. They have to go find a place to walk and exercise. So I think that's a great point. And it just, it came up, you know, last week in Moyoc.
And it adds to the value of the development for the developer? It adds to the value, because people will pay more for those amenities to have those things.
And we pointed that out on that DOT video presentation that we'll be presenting tomorrow night.
Mr. Chairman, the other issue of connectivity is public safety. This is a prime example of one road in, one road out. Same thing for Single Landing. If there's an accident, God forbid, there at the rail crossing, it could keep traffic tied up for quite a while. People can't get in. So that's the aspect of connectivity to me that's most important, is public safety, so that you would have that relief valve if necessary. I hope it will never be the case, but you never know.
Well, at the same time, I know when we went to the small-area plan meeting in Moyoc, and I just made the comment that if you live in Eagle Creek, you have to get out on the highway in order to go to Food Line, which you can see. Why isn't there a way to get from Eagle Creek to Quail Run? We need a bike road through there. We need interconnectivity in that area. We need to plan it that way. And I know I might step on some toes there. But, you know, when you draw a city plan, a small-area plan like that, and you designate uses, I don't know that we can designate, you know, certain roads and everything. But I know we have a bypass that we have put on the Land Use Plan. But I think as we go forward, we really need to think of building highways to assist moving people, as Commissioner Etheridge said, for safety and just for convenience.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Woody? What would the applicant like to say?
My name's Eddie Hyman from Hyman and Robey, and I'd be glad to address some of these questions. The, one of the concerns from Single Landing was the maintenance of the roads that we possibly would be opening up to the use from traffic coming from the north out of this proposed development. And they were, the majority of the people were against that. Like I said, they didn't know who would be paying for, helping pay for maintenance. Right now, those roads are under a homeowners association slated to be state proper, or state roads at some point, but not sure when that will take place. And they were concerned with that. So in the redraw, we show interconnectivity to the property line like we're typically required to do without constructing a road all the way across to another piece of property to make a full-fledged interconnected. We're giving the option to make the connection up, and we're going to build the sidewalks to that property line and pave the road to that property line to offer the pedestrian-type traffic that would follow through. Some of the water pressure concerns in our public meeting were issued, were discussed on the end of Applewood Drive. I reported that to the water department. They've done tests on that. They put meters out and ran a week-long monitoring session. And they reported back very good pressure, actually. The lowest recorded pressure for that week-long tenure was 45 PSI. A typical pressure on a static, typical static pressure on these municipal systems are around 50 pounds. The minimum required is 20 pounds. But we did get good results, so there might be some individual problems from meters to the houses or some meter issues. But the results for the water pressure, as it got reported, it got looked into, and we got the results back. So the loop system from Moyoc, I mean, from Moyoc Landing Drive up to Baxter Lane would help benefit the pressures and make a loop that would benefit the water quality on Baxter Lane, if that's the option that gets used. If we run dead-end line, 6-inch line down Baxter, it will tie back into the 4-inch line, but they won't interfere a whole lot if we do that option. I don't know. I don't know if I've addressed all your questions or not. If you have any more, feel free to ask.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. You were mentioning the roads at Single Landing hadn't been turned over to DOT yet, and I know you've been involved in that.
Yes.
How's that going?
The repairs on the entrance roads have been completed. Gretchen is slated this week to come out and inspect those repairs. And we should get a letter from her this week.
So if, do you think, once the roads are turned over to DOT, that the concerns of Single Landing would be partially answered?
Because the railroad crossing, the holdup for acquisition for DOT is a railroad crossing and the maintenance. The DOT wants to be able to maintain it. The railroad wants to be able to maintain it. We have made some progress in that. Initially, the railroad says, if we're going to give this crossing to you, you have to delete one in our system. And DOT couldn't take a crossing out somewhere else. But they have come to terms now. There's a manner and process to get the railroad company to allow DOT to take this one over. There's hoops to jump through, as always. But there's been progress made over the last, more progress made in the last 90 days than over the last two and a half years for that crossing.
But you feel like that the Single Landing concerns of maintenance on the roads, once they go to DOT, that would be addressed as far as if we wanted, if interconnectivity was considered?
If it goes that route to DOT, that would probably, well...
I know you can't speak for them, and I know we get good on that, but I'm just saying...
They were not happy about an interconnected road from their neighborhood. But...
I understand.
Can I get one clarification?
All right.
Did I hear you say the railroad company wants to maintain a crossing?
They want responsibility in the maintenance of it. They're being paid to maintain it from the homeowners association. There's a fee for maintenance every year. And the DOT wants to be able to maintain their road bid within the crossing area.
Well, I certainly would feel better with DOT being responsible for it.
Well...
And it being maintained, because, well, I'd just leave it at that.
Mr. Hyman, and clarify that. The fee that needs to be paid, and I don't know, Dan, and either one of you, is by the homeowners association or the citizens. It's not going to be taken care of by DOT. I mean, the fees are going to have to come from the homeowners.
And while it's a private road owned by, and maintained by the homeowners association, there's an annual fee for maintenance of the crossing signs and the crossing. There's a fee for the water line that goes under it and a fee for the road, the road crossing itself. It's an annual fee.
But when you said when DOT takes it over, the fee goes away?
The fee would, the fee would go away.
Yep.
I do know it is right, DOT does not maintain between the tracks on any crossing that DOT has a road across.
So they maintain up through the track, but not between the tracks?
That's right. If you look, that concrete... Yeah, if you look at that pad, they may, they might, they'll maintain about a foot on either side of that track. But they won't, like you said, they want to control that rail bed. That's theirs.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone else want to address this topic? I don't see no one. I'll close the public hearing part of this. Fellow commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'd move to approve PB 12-16 to its consistency with 2006 Land Use Plan. And the request is reasonable in public interest and promotes orderly growth and development.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, consideration in action, PB 08-45, Estates at Corova Beach. Request preliminary plat extension to replat 20 existing lots into 28 residential lots in Corova Beach fruitful township. I understand this is just an extension of an existing permit?
Yes.
Okay. Well, your turn. You're up.
In 2009, the Board of Commissioners approved a subdivision of three areas of land in Corova. And there's dark areas. It's really hard to see on this map, but one's at the state line, one's the midpoint. Then the southernmost shaded area is where the volunteer fire department is. So there's three areas where basically 20 existing lots are being replatted into 28 residential lots. They moved the density towards the ocean, where probably where the value is, quite frankly. And in the rear of these, they've created open space sections. January 1st, the preliminary plat will expire. As you've seen on most every meeting the past month or two, is they're here to ask for a two-year extension of that preliminary plat to allow them more time to move this project forward. One thing I'll note of significance with this project is when this does move forward, before it actually becomes, is plat is the final plat, the developer will most likely come to this board and offer the county a dedication of open space, which if the board wanted to accept that, you would then have to do in writing. So that is one thing to keep in mind with this. There is some open space area that may be dedicated to the county. That's about it for me. From staff's perspective, we certainly support this extension.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Woody?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. Of this property, how much of it will be open space?
27.5 acres.
How much of that will be usable for the county for future services or anything if we needed to use it? Or does it have to remain open in perpetuity?
I think the key for the Board of Commissioners is to make sure when you accept it, there aren't deed restrictions in place that prevent our use of it for county services.
So if a motion is made for approval, we could make that part of the motion to make sure that if there were restrictions, then it does, the approval would not stand?
Yeah, that the county has the ability to use the open space.
Makes sense.
Would a motion made to that effect tonight bind commissioners in the future that may be considering that open space acceptance?
I think procedurally, you're going to have to wait for the developer to make that offer of dedication to you as a board.
Okay, that's what I thought. Any other questions or discussion? What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Chairman, I'm going to make a motion for approval with the provision that the open space dedicated to the county will not have any restrictions to the county using it for legitimate public use.
Second.
Well, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business. Consideration of lease agreement with College of the Albemarle for the Regional Aviation and Technical Training Center in Maple. Mr. McCree.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You have before you a proposed lease between the county and College of the Albemarle for the college's leasing of the approximately 40,500-square-foot Aviation and Technical Training Center that's currently under construction adjacent to the airport in Maple. I'll just go through a couple of highlights of the lease agreement. First of all, the county, again, is going to be leasing to the College of the Albemarle the facility for its use as an education facility. The term of the lease will be an initial term of eight years. And thereafter, upon notice by College of the Albemarle, will be extended for subsequent terms of eight years unless and until either party gives notice as required by the lease of termination of the agreement. The next highlight is, I think, the right of the county and COA to use each other's properties for their events. The county will have the right to utilize a parking adjacent to and around the College of the Albemarle facility for events that the county's sponsoring or hosting on its adjacent property around the YMCA and the athletic fields that will soon be built in that area. Likewise, College of the Albemarle will have the right to utilize parking on the county's property for events that it will be hosting or sponsoring within the premises in the facility that it will be leasing from the county. I would note that there's been a minor, just a minor change since this was placed into your agenda pack last week, and that was in Section 13 regarding building, maintenance, and utilities. Just a minor modification of language to clearly set forth the county's responsibility for building, maintenance, and utilities, and the college's responsibility for maintenance and utilities as required by the general statutes, specifically those statutes that relate to these types of agreements between counties and community colleges. But it has no basic change in the way that was already worded in the copy that you have before you. It just was to clean it up and make it more directly related to NC General Statute 115D-32. Those are the highlights. Other than that, the remainder of the lease is typical boilerplate language as found in most land leases of this type. I'd be glad to answer any questions the board might have.
Anybody have any questions from Mr. McCree?
Yes, sir. The lease is just for the building.
That's correct.
No property around it.
That's correct. Again, as I stated, they will have the ability under the lease to utilize the adjacent parking areas and lands, basically upon the lot on which the building sits. We have separated this as a separate lot from the remainder of the county's property on that campus.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item B, recommendation of award of bid for the COA apron.
Mr. Chairman, in your agenda package, you have the synopsis of the recent bid. This is an additional phase of the COA building. This is, we received a Division of Aviation grant funding to support this project. The grant funding now has actually been split into two pieces. What we're bringing you tonight is the grant fund associated with putting the apron at the COA building, along with a connector road from there to Airport Road, but not a crossed Airport Road. The second phase will be literally connecting from that point to the airport, to the actual runway. That phase cannot move forward until we actually discontinue through traffic on Airport Road. So what you have tonight is, again, the apron at the COA up through and to Airport Road, but not crossing Airport Road. It is a 90% Division of Aviation funding, only a 10% local match. This project has been put out... This project has been put out for bid. The recommendation in your agenda package is to go with the low bidder, which was RPC, for the price of $375,274. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from Mr. Scanlon?
Only one. Mr. Scanlon, when will it take, when will the construction take place? After or with?
It will, it will start, if you approve this tonight, as fast as the paperwork can be put together, so within the next 30, 45 days, it'll be under construction. What you'll see, there's actually be some tree clearing, so there'll be additional clearing between, which is literally the back of the building, Airport Road. You have some tree clearing going in there, but for both the projects to be done on time, that, this work will have to start as soon as it possibly can start.
And we have an alternate right, route to put people into the animal shelter and places like that along the Airport Road?
Under this particular phase, we are not interfering at all with the traffic on Airport Road.
Okay.
Before we can move forward with the next phase, which is literally connecting COA to the runway, before we do that phase, we will have to have an alternate route to forestry, to the animal shelter, to the airport terminal itself. That will have to be established before we can shut down at least the through traffic off of Shortcut Road through the COA. So, but that's not this project here. We'll be bringing that to you on a future date.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Scanlon, do we have, what is the latest projected grand opening, if you will?
The...
For the aviation center.
The building, I believe, is, they're talking February?
March.
March. March of 2013 to be completed.
Any other questions?
I move for approval.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C was deleted. Consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Commissioners report. Mr. Martin?
Just a reminder, October the 13th, we'll bark in the park, and we bring your pets to Maple Park, and we will all enjoy the day.
Mr. Etheridge?
Just a reminder that early voting will begin very soon, and it offers an opportunity, Mr. Martin told me the 18th of October, it will offer an opportunity for people to start voting, so there's no excuse in saying they didn't have time on Election Day. Urge everybody to take advantage of it, and it's held at the Board of Elections office.
Mr. O'Neil?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Petry?
I'd like to tell people about the first annual Whalehead Gala, 1020 Gala. It's been 20 years since the county acquired the Whalehead Club, and I think it's 10 years since it's been open to the public. They're having a, I won't say a black tie gala on the 13th at the Whalehead Club. It's, it's beach formal, if you will, and the tickets are $125 apiece. It's being catered. They're going to have music, and they're going to have some tours of the Whalehead Club, and I think there's going to be a reception inside the Whalehead Club. But for those of you who don't know about the Whalehead Club, to go to it, it's, it's a museum, and it's, it's a great piece of history for Currituck County to, just to tell you what a, what a great place we live in. So you can contact the Whalehead Club. Jen Swagert is the, is the coordinator for that, or Ray Meggs at the Whalehead Club, but it's on October 13th, and I think it starts at 6:30.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
I just want to thank all of the citizens that attended the small area plan for Moayak a week ago Monday. Appreciate the comments. The deadline for submission for any comments and suggestions are Friday, October 5th, so be sure and either go on the website and pull that suggestion form down or email the planning department. Tammy Glave is the one that is collecting that data, so please get that information to them. And again, thank you for all of those that attended, and our planning department staff did a great job.
Thank you. And the only thing I was going to remind folks of, Ms. Etheridge, I think the 12th is the last day for registration.
Yeah.
Okay, voter registration ends October 12th, so if you aren't squared away, get squared away. And Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir. Can you, okay, on the screen, you see a picture of one of our employees. This is Liz Hodges, who is the supervisor of our Currituck Central Communications, our 911 center. I'm showing her a picture to you today because she recently was recognized by the North Carolina Association of Public Safety Communications Officials as the center manager for the year for the state of North Carolina. She competed against 128 other 911 centers, and she was recognized for her efforts. The award has a phrase on it, says, "This award is presented to the individual that performs the duties of the manager, director, or assistant director of a communication center in recognition of their accomplishments in encouraging, motivating, supporting, and mentoring their employees." So I wanted to give Liz recognition and stuff that, in fact, she shared with me today for the last, I think it's now the last six years, five of the last six years, either Liz or her staff has been recognized by the state of North Carolina for their commitment to the 911 center. The next, the gentleman in the white shirt is Mr. David Chun. He works with our Outer Banks Water Plant. He, too, was recognized by his association. David was recognized as the 2012 North Carolina Water Works Association AWEL Operator of the Year, again, for the whole state of North Carolina. This award is, is an annual award by North Carolina Waste Water, Waste Water Works Operator Association, has recognized the AWEL-certified wastewater operators who has demonstrated outstanding ability and devotion to technical expertise in the operation of water treatment facilities. Both of these staff folks are actually recommended by their staff, sent letters of recognition and support for their consideration in, in getting these awards, so I wanted to recognize them. The last one, I don't actually have a picture of because the gentleman's actually here. I want to recognize Ben Woody and his staff, the planning staff. They recently were recognized by the North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association. They have an awards branch, the 2012 Marvin Collins Outstanding Planning Award, and they competed in what was the Brian Benson Award category for the implementation of small community plans, and they were recognized for their efforts in the development of the UDO. So I'll make sure that Ben and his staff gets recognition also. We've got a fine staff, and they're getting recognized for it, so I want to make, take an effort to, to recognize them, too, so thank them.
Great. Very good. And not to open old wounds, but the APA, isn't that the insidious UN Agenda 21 organization?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Because I know its name popped up in some of the discourse we heard. Okay, I have, could I have a motion to adjourn so we can go?
Don't move.
Don't move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. All right, then I'll call to order the Tourism Development Authority.
Thirty-six minutes, Mr. Chairman.
We'll be quick. You have a single budget amendment for consideration by the TDA. We now, in the last, I believe, last week, have taken ownership of the historic Jarvisburg Colored School. You have a budget amendment in front of you for us to be able to start talking, taking on the responsibility of outside maintenance, and what you have here is, for actually lawn maintenance. We needed a budget amendment for that. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
One thing, are you going to scrape and paint, you know, where the paint is peeled on the building? It really needs...
It is part, the next phase of work to accomplish, which is getting ready to go out for bids, is, part of that is addressing the paint that's peeling off the building.
All right. Thanks, Chair.
I did want to comment, the staff did meet with the association, the nonprofit that started the restoration of that, and I believe they've reached an agreement on the next phase, and the next phase to finally finish the project on out, all the way through, and Mr. Scanlon and Mr. Weatherly and, and I guess Mr. McCree as well, has all worked to make that come to be, and, and so people will see that starting to finish up soon.
Excellent, because there've been a lot of questions about it.
Yeah.
All right. Any other business for the Tourism Development Authority?
I'm not sure if you actually voted on the budget amendment.
Okay.
You had a motion to second, but I don't know if you took a vote.
Then I started yammering.
Oh, you started, okay.
Yeah.
Something always distracts me.
Yeah.
All right, we had a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now...
Thank you for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening. Thanks for coming.